Did you drop box?
Yeah. Okay, that's right, yeah.
And just look for the date.
Okay.
And if you want to make the screen larger, you just pop this way.
Right, yeah, I figured that out.
Okay.
And then I figured out how to keep it from fading at the start.
Um, well, the other thing is if you want to, if you want to just go, um, the shut off, what happens is it will timeout. So auto lock is set at two minutes. I put never, but you're going to be very careful to shut it off or you kill the battery.
Oh, okay.
So now it won't shut off while you're doing it, and so during the meeting it will always stay on.
Okay, so now, where did you go for that again?
I just wanted to, okay, so this is the easiest way to get out of the screen is to do that.
Yeah.
And you have a toolbox or settings.
Right, yeah, yeah, I got you.
So you hit that, and then you hit general. Let's just go another one. So then you go general, and then you have all these different things you can click on. The one is auto lock. Auto lock, and I put never for you, so it'll stay on for now.
But when I hit that start, it stayed on?
Yeah, you can do that, too.
Because otherwise I'd forget about it.
Okay, Dave, what do you want to do?
Uh, so we have some warrants here to be signed. First is payroll warrants. Who's clerking?
I am.
Payroll warrant, you must have Ann come in and sign it. You need three signatures on it.
Yeah. Can you sign it?
Uh, I think so, I just know-
Okay, you can sign it, right?
Nope, can't.
Only my husband is, um-
That's last week's warrant, right?
Yeah.
Is it gonna, with my husband being in the plumbing spec?
Yeah.
I can't send you.
No, I would hold on, no.
My goodness.
So I'll bring that back on the 21st.
Okay. It's-
I'll give it to the girl, but we'll bring it back.
Yeah, because we're technically not supposed to be paying anybody.
Yeah, um, so, okay.
Trying to get this back, sure.
We'll have to table that until our next meeting. All right, the next is a bill warrant. Uh, treasury warrant. W-13 dash four, in the amount of $240,000, $600, $240,650.57. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Do I hear a motion?
I can't vote on it. I have warrant articles in there.
So same move, same, let's move. Second, those in favor?
No.
You and I, passes, you abstain.
Okay.
Done. Um, is it PCFs here?
Yes. Yes.
Are they in the folder?
I took them out of the folder.
They should be right there, Dave.
Right.
Or the back.
Yeah.
All right, this, how many, two? Should be about four, shouldn't it?
Four.
I have one, two.
All right, yeah, here they are. Okay. So, everybody can vote on these, right? Okay, cool. All right, so personal change form for, um, the new, um, town accountant. And for-
I'm doing one at a time?
Just doing them all at once.
Okay.
Just doing them all at once. There is a one here for, um, new fireman, Pete, uh, part-time EMT. And then there is one here, um, for-
Gloria.
Yeah, Gloria, she's, uh-
Library substitute.
Library substitute. And then, uh, one here for Regina. So entertain a motion for all of these.
I have a motion to approve all four PCFs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
For beans. Okay, um, next up is appointments. Do we have any appointments?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. One day licenses, I thought I saw that.
That's for the local license ring?
Yeah. What the heck is it? That's a photocopier, photocopier. Oh, here we go. All right, I have our one day, um, alcohol license permit, actually it's for Conic Park. And, do you know how to check these? Make sure everything's there, so, you know, uh, home, hot, homeless agreement. And there's no check.
To check it, I have, I never give you guys the check.
Okay.
Right at the bottom that it was received.
Okay, okay. And so, um, I have a motion.
I make a motion to accept the, um, approve the one day with the license for Conic Park on the, uh, is it this Sunday?
The 19th.
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 August 19th.
Do I have a, those in favor?
Second.
Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. And what you do is you sign here. Hey, Rich, right down here.
David?
How are you?
Good.
How's your knee?
Good, dear.
You look a little stiff.
Goodness.
Good to see you, I haven't seen you in a while.
Right on.
All right, um, town owner agreements with PVPC, do we have, is that on the agenda as well?
Nothing at this time.
I'm putting all this back in here, Rich.
Okay.
Um, okay, and then we're to the interim town, interim administrative report?
There are two council and aging grants in front of you. One is from the state and one is from FRTA. The one from FRTA is for the use of the van. The town does not pay any money out. Um, and the one from the state, again, is we do not pay any money out.
Okay, this is the one, I need the blue pen.
Yes, please.
Any questions by anybody on these two? No. Do I have a motion?
Is that the maintenance stuff keeping the voting, too?
Do I have a motion on these two?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Same one.
Okay.
All right, what's next?
The next item is the photocopier leases. In front of you are leases from Rico, in other words Icon, for the police department and the town hall. The police department's lease has expired in July of this year. The town hall expires in November. The annual, the monthly payments are cheaper than what we are paying now, and the intention is to buy out the current police department's photocopier with the cost of $954.68, $954.68, and deliver over to the library who is in need of a photocopier. The funds will then come out of the photocopier expense line for the buyout. There is a service agreement in front of you in case something goes wrong with that photocopier at no charge.
Do you want to look at that?
Um, I have a question. This is a state contract, Enrico?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the second thing is, I was under the impression that the photostatic accounting, that the town hall is for the town hall, and now we're taking the library and then, and the police department's-
No, the police department pays their own expenses for the copyright.
So they'll pay for their own lease?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay. The only thing that's coming out of there is the $900?
Correct.
For the library?
And our monthly-
What do they pay for their, um, computer now, I mean their, uh, copier now?
They don't have a copier. They're, they're using a little inkjet that costs a lot of money.
Yeah, I know it does. It costs a lot of money. I have no problem with it.
So, how are they going to fund, so, just backing up, there's going to be a service agreement for the, for the new one at the police department, correct?
It's included in the lease agreement.
And then there's a service agreement for the one at the library?
No charge, unless they call, it's for one year. No charge.
There's no charge to service it at all?
Correct.
And they have, the library has an account for toner and paper?
That's what it's, that's part of it.
That's all part of the $900?
Mm-hmm, yes, the buyout. So that we own the machine.
Okay, but-
When we say "we"?
"We" meaning the town. The town owns the machine.
Now, is, but when I'm getting it, Reggie, does the library have money in their budget to actually put paper in this thing? And to put a new cartridge in it? New toner? Do they have that?
I don't know.
Okay.
I didn't know.
If it's a machine I'm aware of that had cartridge, probably will last, um, a year.
Okay.
Because we did something very similar to the accountant's office.
Okay.
I had an older copier that went on our lease, so we sent it upstairs, um, uh, and we gave it to the accountant's office, and I think there in there's still original toner.
Yeah.
We're just not going to have that much volume, but the machine's a good machine.
Okay.
And the service that the library would like to provide is for folks who would like copies. They will charge the folks for the copies, so that would balance out a little bit.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Rico contract.
One second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. Okay.
Yes. Can I sign this anywhere, or?
I think so. On that note, because it's a five-year lease agreement, this will be on your special town meeting warrant.
Why, because of the dollar mark?
Because it's a five-year lease.
I'm making a mess.
You have five for free.
It's, it's five-year total for the monthly payment, but three-year for the service. We're, we're paying $133.
I don't think, wasn't there some changes in the procurement that, um, as long as there was a state contract and approved by the state? Because we can't sign a contract that's been priorly approved by the state. I think we can only alleviate ourselves to a three-year contract.
This is a state contract. This is from the state.
So it's a, it's a three-year contract, but we're paying for it for five years.
You're paying the monthly payment for five years, but the service where we get free toner for three years and free service if something goes wrong. After the fourth year, if something goes wrong, we would have to pay for it.
What's the monthly payment?
$133.
This is for the one in the police department?
That's for both, police and town hall.
Oh, we're replacing the town hall one, too?
Yes, that one's broken. As you can tell with the black stripes-
Well, let me ask you, while we're talking about that, is there going to be a code for access?
Yes.
Because I know that machine is used a lot of hours by associations that are not even part of the town.
Yes.
And I'd like to see that stop, because that's what we're losing a lot of paper.
Yes.
Okay. We'll figure, you show me where to sign this thing later, because it's several pages long. Okay. All right, next on the agenda?
My God, I need a blue pen.
I have your blue pen, yeah. I'll leave, do you want to leave it with this, or do you need it?
I do need it. Next on the agenda, um, the Red Cross is holding a blood drive on October 27th. They originally were scheduled at the church, there was a conflict at the church, so they asked if they could use the town hall. The senior center approved, um, for them to use their area on that date, so I'm just forming this whiteboard.
But the, the senior center knows that the board is selecting.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not, it's not, it's not at this time. Okay.
No.
All right. Very good.
And that's all I have.
All right, is that it? Okay. Very good. Rich, why are you hanging out here?
I'm on your agenda.
Rich is on it for 7:20.
7:20.
He's got three minutes.
So how are things in town?
Busy.
Busy. Building up?
Yes, they are.
So where's Halon Way? That's a new one, right?
Halon Way is a little three-house subdivision off the Peabody Road.
Okay.
That 10th quarter route, Ryan Gieler owns it.
All right, any other developments on the horizon you're aware of?
Oh, we got the one just passed out, and that's a 20-day waiting period for winners out on Gilbert Road.
On Gilbert. Is that on the 19 acres that he had for sale at one point? Is that that? Which was kind of-
There's just four block subdivision right now.
Okay.
With plans for 20 more blocks down the road.
All right. All right, so I guess we could just move on and welcome you to this evening's meeting, and how can we help you?
Um, you should have got a copy of a letter that I gave to Reggie to send to you.
In your packet.
Yes, I read that.
Give us a moment as we, um-
Scroll down.
Scroll, agenda, is it in the agenda packet?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes. It is on page seven.
Page seven, okay. I've read this letter already.
All right, uh, what I'm doing, I just want to say, you just, your blessing in this. I'd like to send this letter out because, uh, the town has been kind of overrun by signs. I'm also sending you with a copy of, it's only bylaws for signs.
Yeah.
So people can read and understand.
Yeah, there's a, there's a furniture salesperson-
That, that comes in every weekend for ladies, but what we have a problem is I could go across in front of Red Rock.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's got a sign out there advertising their business, which is completely against all bylaws.
Right.
So I want to send every business in town a letter. It's not only them, it's places like Shields, got signs all over town, they're advertising their flowers and stuff, which is, is stolen bylaws.
Okay.
Bluebird, Acres, Bluebird Refining there, there's signs all over that just-
But those are, they, they do, and I think Bluebird, uh, Bluebirds has a legitimate sign on College Highway, don't they?
Blue Haven.
Blue Haven?
There's a sign there, like a sign, not, not legal sign.
Okay, but there's an option-
That's interfering our business.
Oh, so it can't, okay.
And that's, that's-
So Rich, you're dealing with only illegal signs, what about the political signs? Those are-
We have nothing in our bylaws.
I just want to make sure because-
I've got a lot of stuff I want to play in order to get involved with, but they're very busy right now. But, you know, political signs, there should be something like a, a two-month period before the election that the signs can walk. We've got signs that went up three months already, the election's in over three months away. It's crazy.
Well, there's something about law that after an election, you have so many days to take the signs down.
To take them down, right.
Take them down.
Has that worked out all right in the years past?
Yes, getting them bounced, right, but they, they go so early, it looks, it looks terrible. This town, right? Go through town, go to the other group 10.
Do you-
It's horrendous, it really is.
Do you have the authority to take down those business signs and hand them back to the person?
Yes, I do.
All right, and can they be fined? Is there a fine?
There's no fine in our bylaws for it, but I, I've done a word on it, fine, I just want to get rid of it. You know?
They'll just come back.
You have to come up with decent.
Yeah. Those orange signs are pretty much a nice orange.
When you have them 20 or 30 in a row.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's funny, I, when you, when I noticed, I read this letter and I drove around a little bit, now noticing the signs, and I drove through East Hampton. None of those signs are in East Hampton, they're all in Southampton, because I'm pretty sure East Hampton said enough.
They've already done, they've already locked through this.
Okay.
And you're just saying, they're not touching, because this will probably be, the district is that.
Okay.
You know, telling us that we're anti-business in town and everything else.
That's okay, it doesn't matter, Rich.
You know, we're not, we're just running through the town a little bit.
Can, can you get a copy of the bylaw that East Hampton uses for signage and-
I don't have it.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, but I've read that bylaw, there's, there's plenty of, uh, plenty of, uh, issues that can be dealt with what we have.
No, I'm just saying, do we have to be redone? But do we have enough teeth with a fine involved?
I, I'd say no for a fine.
Okay.
I'm not going to say I'm not looking for a fine, I'm just going to just completely get it down. But you're going to be taking the fall back on this law and bylaws, so.
Okay.
Well, you have a foul number two in the town hall.
That's basically, sorry, you know, it's kind of-
That's part of your job.
I'm just saying, if, if it's in the East Hampton bylaw that there is a, there's a fine involved, it might be something that we can model to add to the existing bylaw we have to give it some teeth.
I've got a lot of issues with zoning that I'd like to get past, but it just takes so much of their past.
My comment on that, I'd like to at least send the letter out and see the response you have. You may have a good response, they're probably not, a lot of people are not aware of the situation, because they see one do it, they're following. I don't think they're doing it because, I think that a lot of people think they can do it.
I talked to Tommy Boyle from Red Rock, and he said it's in their lease over there, they can't, they don't know signs out front.
They can or cannot?
Cannot.
Cannot, okay.
So.
When I ran, I, I called him and I asked, and he said no, and so I didn't put my sign there. But, I mean, I just have a question, if I may.
Yeah, of course.
Um, regarding, you know, the small businesses like Blue Haven, you know, those companies, if, I haven't read the bylaws, so I'm sure you can enlighten me, but if they had, wanted to pay the person that they have the sign on, even though it's not 200 feet in front of their property, that's not allowed at all?
No.
No?
That's what we're on bylaws.
A lot of them, I would say 95% of our town property.
Yeah.
Because the street goes out, so many feet beyond the tar.
Right, right, but, but the town is not open to do, like, if they wanted to put a sign in a public, so if they get more business, they're small and they have to get people-
I know, but, I mean, the bylaws are the rules of the town voted by the people. You know, um, if they need to be changed, they, they should be brought forward and be changed, but we have an obligation to enforce them to the point that, like Rich says, we're not trying to be anti-business, but we're, we're also trying to fulfill the letter of the bylaw that, you know, this is a small town and it's getting inundated with, with signs that aren't even from people from town. And, um, this is not the first time he talked about it, he talked about this with me several times. Um, he's not out, uh, hurting anybody, he's just out, you know, cleaning up some of the mess that's out there. And a lot of these signs, at the end of the year, or like at the end of winter, you've walked the streets, you've cleaned up the end of the streets, we're picking up a lot of garbage that people put out there for advertisements.
But if it's a, it's a, you know, a business that's been here for a long time, and their sign has been there, and it's helpful-
They also have a right to have a sign. I'm not saying they can't, they just have to put a legal sign up.
A legal sign up?
Yeah. Am I right, Rich?
Yeah.
And they have, they have accommodations for legal signs, and they just have to solve.
We've got signs in this town from an individual who lives up in Florida, who's got a Florida telephone number on it to clean his gutters, clean your gutters.
Right.
The guy's got a Florida telephone number on it.
But if it's a substantial business in Southampton, and it's-
Well, you know, if it's in the, on the bylaws, which I talked with Reggie about before, for a home occupation, it's on the bylaw. So if you want to have a home occupation, you get a permit, then you can put a legal sign, because you got a permit, and then you're covered. But right now we have nothing for home occupation, except say, they're permitted in some areas and not other areas, but they're-
Do you want to work with Rich and see if we're able to, to change the bylaw? Maybe it's something, if you want to-
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that companies, especially the smaller, medium-sized companies that have been here, you know, should have some kind of avenue to advertise their business if they're inner, you know, further into Southampton. And if they've had it there for years, just want it.
Maybe also have to follow the letter of the law, too, so, because then I could say a good person on that person.
I think having people live in town can have them, but people that don't live in town, haven't been here long, can't have them.
You have to go by the letter of the law, but if you want to work with Rich and maybe in adjusting-
I'd have to, do some changes.
All right.
Yeah, sure.
All right, essentially, the letter for the law.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
What's your request now?
Rich, how many letters are you sending out?
I'm going to probably have about, uh, 45 letters, Paul.
Okay, that's a lot.
What I've listed, the people I sent them to, so you-
No, I'd like to know how, how the response is.
Be a lot.
Yeah, okay. Could you, could you give us a list of the ones you sent out? Just give us a-
Every letter of the document, sure, that's a problem.
Please, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
That's very helpful.
Sorry.
No, it's, I, I said it wrong.
All right, next up on the agenda?
Hi, Virginia.
All right. There's so much stuff on here, Rich, it's like, oh, those are pending, okay, never mind. So we talked about the grants, the photocopier, Red Cross, blood drive, upcoming meetings, the 21st, September 4th and 18th are so far scheduled, we may have a 28th. State primary election is September 6th, special town meeting is the 18th. Select board update with liaison reports, anybody?
I got a question on a special town meeting. Has the board, when are we getting filled in on this bike path? As far as this article that's coming forward?
All right, so-
What are these coming from, how it's coming, so?
One of, one of, one of the things that I understood is, is a couple of issues. Let me just under, explain what I understand. The, the House and Senate passed the $500,000 for the, for the bike, the Greenway, but it's not appropriated.
It won't be appropriated.
Right. So the governor has to, to sign up for the bond to appropriate the $500,000, and that's up to DeVal. And if it, and so, we don't have that $500,000. I just want to clarify for those people that are listening, that, you know, the Senate and the House did approve it.
They got in there, but the governor's the only-
But the governor is the one that has authorized the, the funding for that, so we don't have the $500,000.
We've filed for those three or four other times in years past.
So that's one thing. Now, from what I understand, there is a application for a grant for the rail bank, and Charlie McDonald is supposed to be coming in this evening.
No, the twenty-first.
The twenty-first, regarding that. And that's an app, I think they're just applying for the grant, I don't think there's any money involved.
There is money involved, according to Charlie.
Charlie, okay, I don't know those details.
I don't know all the details, I just want to know if, is he on the docket to come in before the meeting?
Yeah, he's gonna, he's gonna come on the, on the twenty-first, he'll be here. They're at the Greenway, and I think it would be, you know, important for any, anyone that's listening to, if they have any questions, to be here at the meeting at that time regarding the Greenway and how the Greenway's progressing. But those are the two things I know about the Greenway where it stands right now. I meant to ask, well, never mind.
Is the school roof issue all put to bed?
They will also be here on the twenty-first to update you, yes, it is.
Okay, and that's a fifty-five percent reimbursable grant?
I believe so. But we're just, the first item on the special town meeting warrant is the fifteen thousand feasibility study.
Okay. All right, so discussion items, timber cutting plans, we haven't seen anything. Special town meeting warrant, do we have the draft?
Yes, it's attached with the, everybody who submitted the articles.
It's way down the bottom here somewhere?
Yes.
Do you know about what page?
I want to say it's the last twenty-nine, twenty-eight.
Twenty-three, twenty-four. Just taking a little bit to load.
It starts on page nineteen.
Nineteen.
The draft of the warrant.
Yeah, it says draft all over, okay, all right. So if you want to just, we'll go through, the first article is fifteen thousand dollars by the school committee for owner's project manager, and this is the feasibility study for the roof. And then, so that's article one. Article two is to set gifts and grants or borrow the sum of, which I didn't know that term was in there. So are we appropriating to borrow three hundred and sixty thousand dollars? The article two from the, it's, this is the article two from the conservation committee and, and Greenway committee, and I don't have the answers, and I guess on the twenty-first we'll have those answers, but the way the, the first sentence reads is, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, and transfer from available funds, accept gifts and grants, or borrow the sum of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I didn't know we were going to be authorizing.
I don't know if we borrow, I think we have to bond.
Well, that's how it's said, that's how it's written out. So I don't, I'm not sure where that's, we may have some questions regarding that one, we'll have to come back to that on the twenty-first. There's a highway transfer for the upgrade in the fuel tanks at the yard. And article four is to transfer funds for road repairs. And union contracts are five. And article six is the, the copy of contract we were just talking about, and that's it, there's just six articles on the special town meeting.
There's going to be another article coming forward, because we're having problems with our well, and we're going to be looking to borrow, not borrow well, to take from the water department stabilization fund, money to replace one of the wells.
Replace the well, replace the pump?
Replace the whole well.
Redrill another well.
Redrill another.
Is this the backup well?
This is the, was the original main well, but now it only uses about a hundred and ten gallons versus six hundred gallons, so we need to upgrade that well. So that'll be coming as an article very shortly.
All right. Now, having sort of given a gist of the different warrants, does anybody, different articles, anybody have any questions or discussion? Jackie, do you have any questions?
No, I'm just digesting.
I think article two needs really to be flushed out. I didn't know that Bridge actually said to borrow the sum of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I didn't know that was actually there, that was going to be a grant. Okay. All right, so that'll be on the twenty-first, we'll be talking about further, and the one with the well will be added to it. All right, what's next on the agenda?
I think that's it.
Is that it? Okay.
Except for open time.
Excuse me?
Except for open time.
Open time for the meeting, open time for the, I'm sorry, Virginia.
I'm not here for, I just wanted to know, it was going down with the Greenway article for the special town meeting.
Did you hear what I said?
I heard what you said.
But did, did you know that they were going to have a question of borrowing two hundred and sixty thousand dollars? Was that something that you had been aware of?
I thought they were talking about a grant.
Yes.
They did not ask community preservation, although I'd expected something, and that was one of the reasons I came to them, to see what.
Well, your article's gotta go before their article. If they're gonna come and ask you, and the planning board's gonna vote on it.
But if you notice the first part of it, I mean, they can't come, they can't come that night again, but if you want, you know, taking money from town sources, et cetera.
I, I talked to Charlie a little bit about this, and I saw the bond, the borrowing, and, you know, there's no surplus funds of that nature around here, and so I was just a little concerned when I told him that was where the money's going to come from, and I told him, I think, if you're going to present it, it's going to probably have to be a bond issued to the town, not a borrowing, because we, we don't have that capacity to borrow that kind of money. So, I mean, that's, we need to have this meeting next week.
Yeah.
We need to iron it out.
Yes, Reggie. One more thing, at the, the last page, page twenty-eight, Charlie had given me a press release, I forwarded it to you guys this morning, in regards to the article that's on the warrant, so if the board would like, we can tell them to hold off until the twenty-first.
So was he going to give a press release?
He, this is the press release that he would like to submit to.
Well, he can say whatever he wants.
He can say what he wants, but we haven't determined.
Correct.
The warrant yet.
Correct.
Yeah, we haven't determined where the monies are going to come from.
Right.
And in order to put an article out there, we have to have a source, and if there's no source, there's no article. You know, and if he's looking for money from community preservation, they need time to present articles and bring them forward to the town to vote on before they can be spent by anybody.
Right.
It's just, there's a lot of unknowns out here. At, at, if he wants to put a press release, I just, you know, that, that's him talking, not us.
Just like you said, you, you haven't approved that article to be on the warrant, so why would you?
Well, we need to know where the money's coming from.
There's a little politics involved, we want to be sure, maybe it's a typo, maybe the word borrow's not supposed to be there, it's not supposed to be grant. I'm hopeful that's the case.
What I think, Dave, what he told me is, that we have to borrow the money, pay for it, it's a reimbursable type of thing. I think.
I don't think that's, that's a special town meeting, I think that's a main one, because you want to make sure.
I, I don't know, I don't know. Finance committee's here not to rule in on it, and we need to have, make sure they're here next week.
Okay.
It's not that I'm against the Greenway or anything, I just, I know, we just, I don't know if we can afford that kind of money, it's just.
Well, community preservation doesn't have that kind of money right now. And it was my understanding, the last they, they came, they come pretty regularly, they come to our last meeting, that they came to the one before that, and it was my understanding they applied for this grant, and that they were going to have to go to the town meeting because you have to get acceptance of the grant.
Yep.
And this was what I thought this was about.
Yep.
But I wanted to be sure, because he, you know, has implied that they will quite likely have to come to us at some time. But our contractors are pretty low on the lines.
I got a quick question. There's a change in the Community Preservation Act, that you now can do maintenance part of it, so is it possible to replace the backstop at Connaught Park with some of that fundage? Because that really is a disgrace, it really is. That, that, you know, time bomb investing in our future and for the kids and stuff, that field needs to be redone. And I know S Y A A, there is some money out there, but as far as I've been on this board, I've never seen any of the money get there to actually fix it, maybe I'm missing something.
As soon as I knew that that had passed and was going to be signed, I spoke with Mark Reed about the fact that we can now have money used for community preservation for renovations. In the past, if community preservation money hadn't purchased it or built it, you couldn't renovate it. And that was a very, very famous case earlier, Tom had made it, tried to do that, but they now have changed the line, yeah, and I spoke with Mark Reed, he was kind of pleased to hear it, so I don't know whether they will be hearing something from the park.
The change in Virginia for maintenance and upkeep, or just renovations?
Uh, the maintenance parts.
Yes, I thought, yeah.
But the renovations are clear.
So it is pretty clear, so.
The only thing they can't do is put in an asterisk. No, that's right in the act.
Now, I was looking forward to that.
Yeah, yeah.
Some turf toe for the two-year-olds.
That was Y T X.
All right. Well, it's good to see you again, Virginia.
Well, the other thing I might mention, and you can be thinking about it if anybody comes to you, is that we have set a date for our report to the town, and looking for projects from the town, and last year, we didn't have very many, and a couple of them, the group that presented them never followed up on them. Let me see, ooh, I didn't write it in my little book. Yeah, it's October tenth.
So it's coming up soon. Can you, can you give us a formal letter to the board so that we could then disseminate it at a, at another meeting? Is that possible?
Well, our thought was that, our thought was that I would write.
Okay, all right.
To all of the chairs.
Okay.
But, I mean, projects might be coming, you know, through your board, too.
Okay.
So.
Cool beans. Thanks, Virginia.
That's why I'm here, and this one, I'm leaving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your evening. Is there any other items?
Last item, if you look under the photos, Mr. Frary and Ed, I had taken pictures of the, the war claps that Ed's department will be installing soon.
These are the ones that are going to go on the inside? Wow, now where are these going?
I believe they're going in front.
We have a plan, I gave you a plan.
Yes.
Couple, about a month ago, how they're going to go.
Oh, off, that's right, yeah, that's going to be beautiful.
Concrete bench with the two.
These are beautiful.
Now, what was the funding for, is this a grant that he, was this a grant that he was able to establish?
No, this is community preservation money.
Wow.